Welcome to a courthouse in Osning, to all of you. I know from many of you, very proud moment as it is for us. So to my left is trustee Lopez, to my right is trustee White. We actually requested that this be done in person. We haven't, we ourselves have not been here in more than two years. We just are sort of back and we're very happy to do this in person because it's a, I think, a very important moment for people. We've been doing this on Zoom and it just does not feel the same. So thank you all for making the time to be here, for taking time out of your day, and for joining us today. The way this is gonna work, just so, because there's so many people, we are going to open up as a session. We're gonna vote on that. We will vote on each and every candidate by name. And we needed three trustees. I'm, by the way, Mayor Rick Levin. I don't think I introduced myself. I apologize. And sitting over here is village manager Karen Di Torri. We have also assistant village manager Maddie Sahaj. We have councilwoman from the town Jennifer Toewell. I think those are the elected officials in the room. But as well director of personnel, yes, I was doing elective, but yes, director of personnel, this stuff. So the way this works is we will first do sort of what I call the business of the village and by name. Then I'm going to do the oaths with each and every officer. And I tell you this because I know you all want to take pictures, but we do make room for that. So we will then take a picture with the officers and then we will step aside to all the families and take pictures and stay here as long as you want. We actually have a session that starts tonight that we are going to go through. So that's sort of the process. I hope that helps everybody. So I think we're ready to open up.
Do we need a call to order, please, ma'am?
Yes, so we are going to call to order. It is now 6:00 PM on Wednesday, July 13th. We're gonna call to order a special meeting to be held here in Berthold Tagen Police Court Facility. And we'll do it for the days that I've been gone in two and a half years.
Will you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
And Mayor Levin. Present. Thank you. Public comment on agenda items. Visitor shall be accorded one four-minute opportunity to address the board on any of the resolutions on the agenda for anyone who would like to address the board at this time. Seeing none, let's get into the village board resolutions. Resolution A, resolution appointing William Peppers as probationary police officer. Whereas the County of Westchester Personnel Office has certified to the village of Osning a list of eligible candidates containing at least three names for the permanent appointment of police officer. And whereas William Peppers is ranked on the aforementioned list of eligible candidates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Osning, pursuant to the applicable provisions of the civil service law and the unconsolidated laws of New York State, hereby appoints William Peppers from eligible list number 60-194 to the position of probationary police officer of the Village of Osning Police Department, effective July 18th, 2022, at an annual salary of $57,396. This appointment is subject to a probationary period of 78 weeks.
So move.
All those in favor? Aye. Which microphone? This one? Is this one?
I think it is.
Huh? It's not moving, probably something will turn on. Hello, sir. You're gonna speak loudly.
Alright.
Okay. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
I always enjoy this, so the first group back. We're gonna reveal. You didn't want to be.
Excellent.
So, aye.
Aye, William Peppers.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
I will obey all ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
I will obey all ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
In and for the said village of Osning, New York, to the best of my ability.
In and for the said village of Osning, New York, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, well, you can stay too. You put a lot into this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so this is weird without a microphone. Yeah, just holding it makes this team so much more normal than just yelling at people. Alright. Feels like a party now. Alright, so welcome back, everybody. It's been a really long time since we've had a crowd in this courtroom. And I thank you for bringing me those balloons back there. I appreciate that. This is super cool. We've been down staff for a really long time for a variety of reasons. And to come in here and have six new people join in the police department at once is the largest class we've had in a really long time. So we'll do a little to introduce each other. So those of you that are our family can hear nice things. And those of you that don't know yet and are about to become family, we'll get to know each other real quick. Will Peppers, a graduate of the Osning Schools. He's got an associate's degree in criminal justice, served in the New York Air National Guard. And he comes to us from the NYPD from the 52nd precinct where he's been a cop for a couple of years. So this is a really great hire for us because Will will right away, or maybe in about a month after, we'll field training, we'll show him where all the streets are. He's gonna dive right in, start filling some slots so that we can get our staffing levels up right away while some of the other folks who meet tonight are gonna be heading off to the academy. So big things expected. Excited to have you. Congratulations.
Excellent.
Resolution B, resolution appointing Daniel Rodriguez as probationary police officer. Whereas the County of Westchester Personnel Office has certified to the village of Osning a list of eligible candidates containing at least three names for the permanent appointment position of police officer. And whereas Christian Daniel Rodriguez, Christian Daniel Rodriguez is ranked on the aforementioned list of eligible candidates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Osning, pursuant to the applicable provisions of the civil service law and the unconsolidated laws of New York State, hereby appoints Christian Daniel Rodriguez from eligible list number 60-194 to the position of probationary police officer of the Village of Osning Police Department, effective July 18th, 2022, at an annual salary of $57,396. This appointment is subject to a probationary period of 78 weeks. May I have a motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Believe that passes. See, now that the first one went, it makes it a lot easier for everybody after that. Right? It's all good. This is a big moment. Family, friends, congratulations, welcome. And welcome for joining the force here in Osning. It is, we've been really looking forward to having you across. So we're very excited to have everybody that's here today with us. So. Ready?
It's me.
Okay. Right here? There you go. Aye.
Aye, Christian Daniel Rodriguez.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for my, for our actions.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations.
I will obey all the ordinance and rules and regulations.
Of the village of Osning and will faithfully discharge the duties of office of police officer.
Of the village of Osning and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
In and for the said village of the village.
In and for the said village of Osning, New York.
Best of my village. Come a little ahead of me, I'm okay. Let's go, congratulations.
Thanks.
We're gonna work on that confidence, speaking in public thing. So Christian comes to us from the Department of Corrections, which is always a really nice thing to be able to bring people. He's a graduate of Osning High School with a background working in youth, both with Green Chimneys and at All Aboard, which is the polar opposite of working in a New York State prison. So we love well-rounded people and if you can't get more well-rounded than that. You know, the nice thing is when you hire local people and they have these type of experiences, it adds to the department. And we want people with all different subtypes of experience. But one of the real joys of hiring somebody out of Corrections is that, as you can imagine with all the prison shows on TV, you don't get a lot of contact with the outside world when you're in there. And the transition from there to being able to answer a phone call from your family to moments' notice is a real, is a real upgrade in life and in quality of life for not only the employee and that adds to the service provided to the community. So we're really happy to break you out of prison and have you here with us. So congratulations.
Before you do that, if I could just also say that the supervisor from the town, the police reports actually to the village, which is why the mayor and trustees. But Daniel Peppers is the supervisor for the town of Osning. Thank you for joining us.
Resolution C, resolution appointing Jason Marquez as probationary police officer. Whereas the County of Westchester Personnel Office has certified to the village of Osning a list of eligible candidates containing at least three names for the permanent appointment position of police officer. And whereas Jason Marquez is ranked on the aforementioned list of eligible candidates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Osning, pursuant to the applicable provisions of the civil service law and the unconsolidated laws of New York State, hereby appoints Jason Marquez from eligible list number 60-194 to the position of probationary police officer of the Village of Osning Police Department, effective July 18th, 2022, at an annual salary of $57,396. This appointment is subject to a probationary period of 78 weeks. Do I have a motion?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Come, come on up. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here. Those balloons for you. Is that your daughter? But she doesn't want to come up here? What do you say? Is that your daughter? Well, she should come up here. Why is she sitting all the way back there? Yeah, so there's plenty of room up here. I'm going to tell you that as far as I can tell, when people become officers, the family becomes a big part of the whole unit. So come on, you can get in closer. We all like him. It's all good. Hello, ladies? How are you? Good. You look very lovely. Thank you for coming here today. Okay, you ready?
I'm ready.
I have two. Aye.
Aye, Jason Marquez.
Being duly sworn state on my honor, I will never betray my badge.
Being duly sworn state on my honor, I will never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
I lost my spot. And I will support, I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer in and for the said village of Osning.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer in and for the said village of Osning.
New York to the best of my ability.
New York to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay, another product of the Osning Schools, another longtime Osning resident and neighbor to many of us here. So you know, one of the things that makes Osning unique is many places when you hire police officers, they come from all over the, all over the area, all over the county or outside of that. We, we really take pride in the fact that every one of the people that are hired here have deep roots in the community. So Jason, obviously here with his family, who are also village employees and other family members that are friends to the department and local businesses. Where's your mom?
My mother is right there.
There she is. Friends of the department. And honestly, the things like that, while some people look and say, well, they hire people they know, but we also, we hire people the community know and people that have ties and that are gonna have relationships. And that's really what defines Osning and how our police department operates different than a lot of other places. It is a very, very personal style of policing and we have high expectations. Congratulations.
Resolution D, resolution appointing James Hazel Jr. as probationary police officer. Whereas the County of Westchester Personnel Office has certified to the village of Osning a list of eligible candidates containing at least three names for the permanent appointment position of police officer. And whereas James Hazel Jr. is ranked on the aforementioned list of eligible candidates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Osning, pursuant to the applicable provisions of the civil service law and the unconsolidated laws of New York State, hereby appoints James Hazel Jr. from eligible list number 60-194 to the position of probationary police officer of the Village of Osning Police Department, effective July 18th, 2022, at an annual salary of $57,396. This appointment is subject to a probationary period of 78 weeks. Do I have a motion?
So move.
All those in favor, got it? All those in favor, thanks, Dan? Aye. We have a vote. Now we need the person. They all wear blue suits, I like that. Sir? Congratulations, sir. Hello. Is that your little cousin? Excited. You ready? Okay, raise your hand, please. Aye. Being duly sworn state on my honor.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
In and for the said village of Osning, New York, to the best of my ability.
In and for the said village of Osning, New York, to the best of my ability.
Alright, so I'm gonna start my story. And if any of this sounds inaccurate, you just keep nodding along until everybody's true. So a few years back, we talked about hiring police officers and how we're gonna find different crops of people and reach out to kids that we hadn't touched yet to explain why this is the career for them. Oftentimes in policing, you find people that grow up saying, I've always wanted to be a cop. And sometimes the best ones are the ones that didn't necessarily say that until somebody grabbed them and said, this is the job for you. So James and I connected at the community center, hanging out and playing basketball with kids. And I don't care who told them to take this test first. I told them to take the test. I'm gonna take responsibility and say, I own this one. So proud moment for me that it's a kid in the community that I'd met along the way and said, hey, you seem like a great fit for this and you work well with these kids here in the community. Graduated the Osning Schools with a background working in residential youth facilities and also working here for our recreation department. Again, all of the things we're looking for in a police officer. But finding him there in the community center, playing basketball, him well, I mean, not so much. I'm not tall. And saying, hey, look, I see how you interact with these kids. You're just what we need and this is gonna be a great job for you. And the things that you're doing now, you can continue to do with us for better money. So really, really glad to have you here. Congratulations, great things to expect.
Resolution E, resolution appointing Ellen Martinez as probationary police officer, Spanish-speaking. Whereas the County of Westchester Personnel Office has certified to the village of Osning a list of eligible candidates containing at least three names for the permanent appointment position of police officer, Spanish-speaking. And whereas Ellen Martinez is ranked on the aforementioned list of eligible candidates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Osning, pursuant to the applicable provisions of the civil service law and the unconsolidated laws of New York State, hereby appoints Ellen Martinez from eligible list number 60-224 to the position of probationary police officer, Spanish-speaking, of the Village of Osning Police Department, effective July 18th, 2022, at an annual salary of $57,396. This appointment is subject to a probationary period of 78 weeks. May I have a motion?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hello there. How are you? Congratulations. Are you nervous? You ready? Don't be nervous. This is the easy part. It's okay. Hello, family? Welcome. Hello, young lady? Maybe you'll be the next class. Looking forward to it. They look nervous too. Why is everyone so nervous? Must be me. Ready?
Yes.
Did you see the other guy?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, Ellen Martinez.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the village of Osning.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
In and for the said village of Osning, New York, to the best of my ability.
In and for the said village of Osning, New York, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We got time. Now just hold it, don't let it fall. There you go. There. Good job. Okay. Another prison break story, right? So Ellen also comes to us from the Department of Correction. So again, especially having a family, a really nice thing to be able to be in contact with your family all the time, right? Not allowed to bring phones into the prison in spite of what they show you on television, right? So Ellen, Ellen is a graduate of Sleepy Hollow High School. We're gonna just pretend that didn't happen. Nonetheless, anyway. Listen, women in law enforcement are extremely hard to find. We go down these lists and we simply don't find people applying and taking the test. So take the test. Come work with us. Take the test. It's a great job. Really hard to find and so exciting when we find somebody as wonderful with such experience. You know, anybody that comes from Department of Corrections has dealt with people under the most difficult of circumstances. So to have somebody that comes from that and Spanish-speaking. Our community is in dire need of police officers and employees in every, in every department that can communicate in multiple languages because we have so many people that are struggling so much to learn our language. So Ellen comes to us before Corrections as a bilingual customer service representative. And someone told me being a cop was hard, but yeah, you're ready, right? So we're gonna just throw you right out there. So listen, lots of good experience. Again, people with great ties to the community that went to annoying high schools down the road that we don't like. But otherwise, super excited. Congratulations, great things to come.
Resolution F, resolution appointing Jose Diego Mako Wavara as probationary police officer, Spanish-speaking. Whereas the County of Westchester Personnel Office has certified to the village of Osning a list of eligible candidates containing at least three names for the permanent appointment position of police officer, Spanish-speaking. And whereas Jose Diego Mako Wavara is ranked on the aforementioned list of eligible candidates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Osning, pursuant to the applicable provisions of the civil service law and the unconsolidated laws of New York State, hereby appoints Jose Diego Mako Wavara from eligible list number 60-224 to the position of probationary police officer, Spanish-speaking, of the Village of Osning Police Department, effective July 18th, 2022, at an annual salary of $57,396. This appointment is subject to a probationary period of 78 weeks. May I have a motion?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hello, sir.
Hello.
Mayor Levin, welcome.
My beloved.
Hello, sir. Congratulations, all. You good? Don't want anybody chirping. Feeling good?
Feeling good.
Alright, we saw how nervous did it.
I'm ready.
I know, right? You stand up here and all of a sudden it's nerve-wracking. So take a deep breath, it's all good. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Aye, Jose Diego Mako Wavara.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
Being duly sworn state on my honor.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
Further that I am a resident of the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of New York.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of New York.
I will obey all the ordinances, rules, and regulations.
I will obey all the ordinance, rules, and regulations.
Of the Village of Osning.
Of the Village of Osning.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of officer, office of police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
In and for the said Village of Osning, New York, for the best, to the best of my ability.
In and for the said Village of Osning, New York, to the best of my ability.
You can keep going. Okay, so a couple of years back, when, um, when I started taking on a lot of extra responsibilities, when I became chief, my wife changed my name in her phone to Mr. Osning because something was happening. I was always at it. But Jose is a member of the Osning Fire Department, the Osning Volunteer Ambulance Corps, now the Osning Police Department. I think you take the title, my friend. You might be Mr. Osning. Again, everybody that we have, we want, we want you to be ingrained in this community. We want you committed to the community. And there's nothing that says you're more committed than spending all of your time that's not paid, actually volunteering right back at the same jobs you already do. Shows a real sense of dedication. It's something that makes it real easy when you're interviewing people to decide one candidate versus another. Spanish-speaking, we gotta talk about that. I forgot to mention something. Two of the candidates that you've just seen, if you listen to the resolutions carefully, they come from a list that's designated as police officers, Spanish-speaking. What we've done with this list, there are two separate tests. These two officers are a special designation. Three of the six tonight speak Spanish. Two of them came off the Spanish-speaking list, which means that when these officers leave us in twenty years when they retire, or thirty or forty, however many, stay for a long time. Whenever it is that they retire and they move on, the person who replaces them will have to be someone from the Spanish-speaking list. So these will become permanent Spanish-speaking employees, which is the real commitment that our police department's been struggling to have. That said, that list only contained twelve people. So it's not always possible to say, hey, let's make twenty Spanish-speaking cops. We didn't even have that many people apply for the job. But what we're going to do over time is we're gonna establish more and more of those positions in order to show that there really is a commitment. And if you sit on our desk and you listen to calls that come in, it's such a need in our community. So we're really grateful for you to bring that skill. That's a skill, that's not you as a person. As a person, what we're really grateful for is all of your dedication to the community, your love for everything you do.